I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on May 18, 2023. For law office, it's St. Helen's Day. If you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a quick housekeeping, attending with us remotely is Councilmember Cox and Councilmember Stebbins not with us this evening. With that, we have a published agenda and consent agenda. Is there any changes? Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda tonight is public recognition and presentations, the Lacey Youth Council report. Come on up.
Hi, everyone, and good evening, Lacey Council. I'm Zoray Sade Ramirez, and I am speaking on behalf of, speaking on behalf of North Hurston High School tonight. Unfortunately, last Tuesday at 12:03 PM, it was during second lunch, we had a lockdown due to nearby police activity that was deemed a threat to the school. Luckily, a lot of the, or the majority of the students used professionalism and swiftness that I am happy to say I feel safe if anything were to happen like that again, that, that all the staff and all the students are doing their part to, you know, keep things going. The lockdown was, was over briefly. It only lasted about five minutes, but everything is okay. And brighter news, there is an interesting shift in athletics that I've noticed. High schools in the North Hurston School District have established esports teams, which they are official teams that are officiated by the WIAA and compete with other high schools. And furthermore, the North Hurston High School, the North Hurston High School esports team brings home the WIAA state championship for its first year, which is, that's nice. Secondly, testing season is over with SBA and advanced placement tests, advanced placement tests coming to an end. And all the students, including myself, feel a tremendous relief as the weather warms up and thoughts of summer vacation roll in. And fittingly, May is Mental Health Awareness Month with, with North Hurston High School hosting their annual Mental Health Resource Fair during both lunches on this upcoming Tuesday. That will be all. Thank you and good night.
Can you explain what esports is?
Oh, yeah. So, well, esports is just, they're just video game competitions, basically. So, the exact same as a football team going against another football team. So, I just thought it was interesting that we're seeing like a shift going there because it's, like, it's pretty popular, like outside of schools, but we're seeing younger people go into that as well.
Which games?
Well, we're seeing like Rocket League. That's all I know of. And there also, I've heard talks of other games as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rory Line. I'm going to be doing the presentation for Timberline High School. At Timberline, in particular, there's been epidemic going on, vaping epidemic, where every time that you go into the bathrooms or really anywhere in the school, there's always a smell of vape. It's, it's lovely. And whenever you bring it up to any of our supervisors or teachers, our principal, our vice principals, they always try to throw it to the side, like it's not important, even though it's not allowed in school. And I don't think that kids in high school are allowed to buy vapes, but that's irrelevant, apparently. Two weeks ago, we had our Spring Spectacular, which is a, I believe it was six plays in a series of three days. Two were student-written. It went very well. And we also had, well, this week is the week of SBA testing. For Timberline, it's lovely. We love, we love ourselves. Yeah, that would be the end of our, all our testings for this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Keegan Bolt. I'm a senior at River Ridge High School. I was kind of prepared on short notice. So, the one thing I wanted to talk about is that, like, last week, we also had a, well, actually, it was not a lockdown, it was a lockout due to nearby police activity that was deemed that, you know, we need to lock, go into a lockout for student safety, which is different from a lockdown because all it really means is that we can't move like between buildings, outside of the building, because, you know, River Ridge is divided into multiple buildings with different classrooms. So, we basically just can't go between those. And you, usually, students have had an issue with, and teachers have had an issue with how administrators deal with these, usually with a lot of lack of communication on what's happening and why, and it's caused lots of anxiety. But this most recent incident, there was actually a decent amount of communication from the, like, office over the intercom and to teachers and to students on why this was happening, what was happening, and what we need to do. And I saw a lot less anxiety from the students around me. So, that was a really good change to see, and I hope that we continue on that trend. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Lacey Youth Council. So, next up on our agenda is public comments, and the first person signed up is Danny. Danny?
Hello, everyone. I did, my name is Dan Burkett. I am a veteran. I am also the founder of Our Arc, which works with homeless street youth here in Thurston County, ages 13 to 25. I did have a PowerPoint to show you, but I see that it's not up there, but it had multiple pictures of destruction of our kids and also had some pictures of some successes that Our Arc has been through with our homeless street kids that we deal with. So, basically, there is a need for shelter housing, need for community members, need for people to come out and reach out to our homeless street youth. There we, the youngest person that we have met, Our Arc has met with our street outreach team, is 15 years old. It's not just about their own drugs, it's about them needing someone who cares, love, who gives empowerment, who gives encouragement to our young people. Where are these people at? Do we have enough funding for that? Do we have enough people for that? I don't see those people. I've been doing this for seven years, and I've seen some of these kids go from 15 years old to 20 years old. So, I feel like a parent already to some of these young people because I've been out there for so long with them. What are we doing for our young people? Yes, we have multiple adult shelters for 18 and above. There is no 18-year-old street youth that's going to go into an 18 and up shelter for our kids. So, why can't we have another besides CYS that's going to house, that's going to welcome our young people? I am passionate about what I do. And today, I had to go pick up a 20-year-old that was human trafficking. Yes, I did. Who is going to pick up a 20-year-old at 7:30 in the morning? What agency? This one. I did that, and I'm still dealing with her right now. I'm not a nine-to-five. Our Arc is not a nine-to-five. So, what I'm looking at is asking, what are we doing for our young people who are reaching out to Thurston County, who's reaching out to these cities? I'm the, I'm the advocate for them.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Scott Goodwin, and then I think we might have someone on Zoom. Please just introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
All right, we'll do my best. You owe me 15 seconds because of yesterday.
Sure.
You got it. Dear Lacey, Councilmember of City of Lacey, good evening. It's a pleasure to speak with all of you. The past few months, I've gotten to know all of you personally. I love Lacey, and I want to see it grow, be financially sound, and be a safe place to raise our families. However, I am concerned about the upcoming month of June in regards to the city's flag policy. Last September 15, 2022, this council voted on a revision to the City of Lacey's flag policy. Councilmember Kunkel said the United States, Washington State, City of Lacey, and the POW MIA Vietnam-era flags represent all citizens of our community. Councilmember Greenstein said he believes recognizing one segment of the community over one another, over another is discriminatory, and I agree. Now, Mayor Ryder, you said something that was very interesting during that meeting, and I quote, "The progress flag is specifically aiming at everyone who has been marginalized." Now, I've been reading about the progress flag, and your initial comment doesn't exactly ring true. Regarding the pride flag, according to the Queer in the World website, for the last 40 years, the iconic LGBT pride flag, produced by Gilbert Baker, with its six different colors, has been globally recognized symbol of the LGBT community. The redesigned Pride Progress flag, created by Daniel Quasar in 2018, features black and brown stripes to portray marginalized LGBTQ+ communities of color. But it would appear the progress flag represents the LGBTQ community only. Now, Google provides the following definition. The term marginalized describes the person or group that is treated insignificantly, pushed to the margins of society, and rendered powerless. However, in 2015, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled gay marriage to be legal. In 2020, the EEOC updated its employment protection code to include gender identity and sexual orientation. And Hollywood has increased its frequency of LGBTQ+ characters in movies and television by over 22% as far back as 2019. And the Drag Queen Story Hour was founded in San Francisco in 2015. The organization proudly advertises that it started out as a drag queen's reading stories to children in libraries and grew into a global phenomenon. So, my question is, is the LGBTQ+ community still being marginalized in America, or is it being celebrated? Conversely, according to the Pew Research Center, Jewish Americans perceive a rise in antisemitism. Recent hate crimes have included several high-profile incidents of hate, including white nationalists chanting Jews will not replace us. That took place in Charlottesville and deadly shootings at synagogues in Pittsburgh and Poway. What about the Christians of today? Ken Ham for the Answers in Genesis website dated September 1 of 2015 wrote, "It is quickly becoming more and more obvious that religious freedom is declining in America. Christians are increasingly being punished by the government for acting on their sincerely held religious beliefs, specifically about marriage. More and more people are being disciplined or fired from their jobs because they profess a Christian faith." Therefore, as a citizen of the United States and a voting representative, a voting resident of Washington State and the City of Lacey, I propose recognizing two additionally marginalized segments of our population, members of the Jewish and Christian faith. May 14 of 1948 is celebrated as the date of the birth of the nation of Israel, and December 25 is celebrated as a date of the birth of Christ. I submit that the entire month of May should be used to display Israel's national flag, and that the entire month of December be used to display the Christian flag at all City of Lacey flagpole locations. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, I think we have on Zoom Chelsea. Ms. Chelsea?
She should be trying it momentarily.
Hello, guys. This is Chelsea. I, Danny from Our Arc has helped me get off the streets being homeless. I've worked with him for, since 2019. And I really think that having, like, a place for the youth besides, like, 17 and under would be very helpful for, you know, kids getting off the streets and wanting to do better in their life. Trust me, I've been there. It's not easy. By all means, it's really not. And I think, like, with kids 17 and younger being left on the streets with nothing and no family is really hard for people. So, I think it would be very, very helpful if the City of Lacey would give us the opportunity to help the youth that are struggling still.
Great. Thank you for your comments. With that, we've, is there anyone else wishing to address the council on the items? Seeing none, we'll go to our next agenda item, which is a referral from the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, I am bringing to you a Planning Commission recommendation to adopt ordinance 1637, amending the Capitol facilities plan to add the construction of the Lacey Police Station. A little bit about what a Capitol facility plan is. A little bit about what a capital facility plan is. The general purpose is to show the financial plan that implements the city's comprehensive plan. The capital facilities plan contains an inventory of our existing capital facilities owned by the city, showing their location and capacities. It also provides a forecast of the future needs for these facilities. It also shows the proposed locations and capacities of expanded or new capital facilities and a six-year plan that will finance the facilities as well. There's also a requirement that ensures that the land use element, capital facilities element, and financing plan within the capital facilities plan are coordinated and consistent. As you're aware, staff is currently working with a consultant team to complete a full rewrite of our capital facilities plan with a stronger emphasis on alignment with the comp plan and with a new format. Our last comprehensive, or excuse me, our last capital facilities plan was was first generated in nineteen ninety-three, back when Steve Kirkman was an intern. So it is overdue time for an overhaul for our capital facilities plan. It will also, this new plan will provide recommendations for general government facilities and buildings based on our population growth and building conditions. This plan will be completed by the second half of two thousand twenty-three. So in order to utilize certain revenue streams, including real estate excise tax, known as REIT, and council council medic bonds, the Lacey Police Station project needs to be identified in our capital facilities plan. Since the new capital facilities plan will not be completed until the second half of two thousand twenty-three, an interim update to include the new police station is necessary, and that's in front of you here tonight. The current capital facilities plan, which I mentioned, was last updated in two thousand nineteen. It does identify a new Lacey Police Station, but only identifies the funds through the preliminary design stage. Since that time, staff's been working with a design professional and is currently at a sixty percent design stage to develop plans and identify the budget for the new facility. The capital facilities plan that's in front of you tonight, the amendment identifies the full build-out of the police station rather than the previous version, which only identified the preliminary design. So this is a Planning Commission recommendation. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the amendment back on March twenty-first. No oral or written public testimony was received. After the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Capital Facilities Plan Amendment to the City Council. And ordinance, the ordinance that's in front of you essentially repeals and replaces one figure from our existing capital facilities plan. That's figure GG twelve, which would replace the current version, which identifies only through preliminary design with the full and complete build-out of the of the new station. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance number sixteen thirty-seven, capital facilities plan interim amendments for police facility.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, go ahead.
It's really exciting that we're able to do this. I think we're all looking forward to having a police facility that meets the needs of our police department. And I'm glad that we're incorporating it into the the city's comprehensive plan. I did just want to mention something that came up in our meeting on Tuesday, though, when we met jointly with the North Thurston Public Schools Board. There's also plans in the works to try to develop a childcare facility in the coming years. And I know that there's also going to be a financial demand for that. And our obligation there is different because it's not something that we do, you know, we don't provide direct services in childcare like the way that we do with police. But I hope that we are just as thoughtful and creative and persistent in trying to find the funding to build that childcare facility as we have been in building the police station.
And so we've had some discussions about that and are aware of that, and that'll be part of the recommendations moving forward. My understanding is with that facility, that's going to be a school district-owned facility. Is that correct? So that wouldn't technically be something that would appear in our capital facilities plan because it's not a facility owned by the City of Lacey.
This one, you had me stumped because I know we had we had put money towards this design already. And if we put money towards design, it had to be in our capitalist facilities plan. But it was only to thirty percent, and this is for the full. That's where the difference is.
Right.
And so I'm like, wait, man, how's how's this possible? We've already put money on this, which means it had to be in our plan. Anyway, anything else? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen thirty-seven, amending the capital facilities plan to add the construction of Lacey Police Station, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Uh, next up is resolutions. We have two this evening. I'll turn it over to Shannon for the first.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. There are two resolutions, and I will actually introduce kind of both of them together as they are very well-connected. So before you are two resolutions, we have, just for background and a very quick overview, although if you go back to our previous work session, you will get a more in-depth review of these projects and the city's process for evaluating our telecommunications franchise agreements. But just really briefly, on April third, two thousand twenty-three, the city received two telecommunications franchise agreements. They are included in tonight's, are included in the previous packet. The first telecommunications franchise agreement with was is with Zipley Wireless LLC, and that is for retail and wholesale data for internet access. And they would be the owner-operator of a fixed wireless network. And again, this would not be cellular, but would be wireless data. The second application that came in was for Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC. And again, it was retail and wholesale data for internet access, and they would be the owner and operator of the fiber optic-based network. So for prior review, like I mentioned earlier, we did do a pretty extensive review at the last work session on May eleventh. For background, based on the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, which is federal legislation, the city cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting prohibiting the provision of telecommunications services. And to that degree, the Lacey City Council has included in the Lacey Municipal Code, Chapter five sixty, which is our telecommunications chapter. And in there, it expressly states that we will provide reasonable, fair, and equitable access to the public rights of way for the city for telecommunications purposes based on a competitively neutral basis. And within that chapter have provided a number of criteria for which the city will evaluate any applications that come in for telecommunications franchises. I do want to point out that in the agreements, the franchise language is consistent with past telecommunications franchise agreements. So the recommendations for tonight are to adopt resolution number one thousand one hundred and thirty, granting a telecommunications franchise for Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC and authorizing the city manager to enter into a franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC. And then the second recommendation would be to adopt resolution number one thousand one hundred and thirty-one, granting a telecommunications franchise for Zipley Wireless LLC and authoring this authorizing the city manager to enter into a franchise agreement with Zipley Wireless LLC.
Normally, I would take this as one motion, but I was just advised to take it as separate since they're two separate franchise agreements. So can I get a motion to the first one?
Yeah, I would move to adopt resolution number eleven thirty, granting a telecommunications franchise for Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC and authorizing the city manager to enter into a franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, although I don't see Councilmember Cox.
There she is.
There she is. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Can I get a motion to adopt the next resolution?
I move to adopt resolution eleven thirty-one, granting telecommunications franchise to Zipley Wireless LLC and authorizing the city manager to enter into a franchise agreement with Zipley Wireless LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion also unanimously carries, and we could adopt both franchise agreements. Thank you. Now we're on to the mayor's report, since we passed the ordinance under the referral from the Planning Commission. And I will take this as one motion because I can do that. It's my motion to reappoint Councilmember Stedman and Councilmember Greenstein to the Left One Disability Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion carries, and you've both been reappointed to the Left One Disability Board. I'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. We have two items on the city manager's report tonight. We have a memorandum of agreement with South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, and Shannon Kelly-Fong will present that.
Counsel. Is it working? Not working?
We cut you off. I'm just kidding.
I only have I only have two more presentations tonight, and then you're more than welcome to do that. Well, good evening again. Before you is a memorandum of agreement for the South Sound Military Communities Partnership. Just a little bit of background on the South Sound Military Communities Partnership. This all started back in two thousand and ten when there was an OED grant. And through the OED grant came out the Growth Coordination Plan for JBLM. And one of the recommendations in the Growth Coordination Plan was to have a more unified voice when it came to military communities surrounding Joint Base Lewis McCord. And so the outcome of this in two thousand and eleven was the establishment of the South Sound Militaries and Communities Partnership. The City of Lacey joined this partnership in March third, two thousand and eleven, and has been a member since that time. In two thousand and fifteen, the memorandum of agreement was amended from the original agreement. And then in two thousand and seventeen, there was an additional amendment. And I am here tonight to request a third amendment to the memorandum of agreement for SSMCP. Just really quickly, the purpose of SSMCP is to bridge military and civilian communities through innovative and flexible partnerships and performing mutually beneficial work here in the South Sound. The membership includes over fifty members, including the City of Lacey, other cities, counties, tribes, and nonprofit organizations, as well as Joint Base Lewis McCord. As you can see from the agreement, the structure of the organization includes elected officials that provide policy direction, the executive leadership team, which provides oversight of day-to-day operations, the steering committee, which provides oversight and strategic direction, and then work groups, which support programs and policy creation. The budget for South Sound Military Communities Partnership is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year and includes two full-time staff members. SSMCP is very, very busy and doing a lot of really good work here in the South Sound. So what I provided here on the slide deck is just a brief overview of some of the work that they are involved in. But they are looking at land use, infrastructure, traffic, jobs, social services, environmental resiliency, economic development. And they've performed a lot of major projects and studies over the last decade-plus that they have been in existence, including really leading the effort for the North Clear Zone Project, continuing to update Joint Base Lewis McCord Economic Analysis Studies. And the most recent study is coming out here fairly shortly. I'm sure the deputy mayor got a sneak peek of that as part of the elected officials' council last week. They also have been doing growth coordination planning, workforce surveys, land use surveys, and a lot of legislative advocacy. I won't go over every line here, but this information is available at ssmcp.org. But this is the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four work plan for the organization. And like I said, they have been very busy, in fact, incredibly busy at the state legislature this year. They had been advocating for a lot of the occupational licensure changes that occurred at the state legislature. They continue to be strong supporters and advocates of the I-5 Nisqually Project, continuing to improve compatibility measures, going after funding and other programs connected to the North Clear Zone, continuing to communicate the economic benefits of JBLM to the greater region, as identified with the study that is being updated this year. And in addition to that, they were very helpful in getting additional funding for a statewide economic impact analysis for all of the military bases here in Washington State. And so that'll kick off this year and go until to next year. So we'll have something very similar to what we have here for JBLM for all of the military installations in Washington State. I do want to really kind of tip my my cap to Bill Adamson and Maria Tobin, who are the two staff members of SSMCP, as well as Shelley Shelley Helder, who is with Gordon Thomas and Honeywell, and she helps with government affairs for SSMCP. You can see I've included here on the the right-hand side of the slide deck, the two thousand twenty-three state legislative agenda. They were incredibly successful working on their legislative agenda, working on the SSMCP legislative agenda this year. A couple of things that I do want to point out, the occupational licensure, like I said, they were highly involved in and really helped move the needle there. But an additional thing that I wanted to to highlight is the Defense Community Accountability Account, also known as DCCA. This is a new account that was created several years ago on the books as far as its structure. This year, they were actually able to get funding into the DCCA account. And over, excuse me, nine hundred thousand dollars is going to the North Clear Zone as part of the DCCA account from the state this year. So an incredible amount of work has gone into that, and it's been very successful. And I think we'll continue to see a lot of successes for the South Sound moving forward. And they're continuing, like I I mentioned, with that statewide economic impact analysis, and we're provided with funding to do so. So we are here for the memorandum of agreements, and I just want to briefly highlight the changes from the last amended agreement. So the real changes come in the dues for memberships. So for the executive leadership dues, the increase is from fifty thousand dollars to a range of fifty thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars. So Pierce County and Lakewood are paying seventy-five thousand dollars, and Lacey and the Nisqually Indian Tribe are paying fifty thousand dollars as executive leadership team members. The steering committee dues also increased, and this increase is from six thousand five hundred dollars to eight thousand five hundred dollars, with the exception of the City of Tacoma, which will remain at that lower tier.
Any particular reason for that?
At this, at this time, the City of Tacoma indicated that they were could not increase their membership dues. The working chair groups were updated to reflect the current working chair groups. And then there was some minor language updates to increase inclusivity and provide references to current planning documents. So I mentioned previously, you know, to start off this process, the the Growth Coordination Plan that has since been updated. And so that is now reflected in the updated language. I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has. The recommendation is to motion to approve the amended South Sound Military and Communities Partnership memorandum of agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Just, I mean, I think it's it's clear that we are a military community, and it's and they've done great work over the years for almost as long as I've been on council. I think it's it's pretty much a no-brainer that we need to stay involved.
Well, actually, I wasn't going to say this, but a little history on this. The Department of Defense, OEA, didn't just give this region a a grant out of the blue. How that happened was that the City of Lacey, former city manager and myself went up to talk to Lakewood because I'd I'd been at Public Private Partnership on Fort Louis for quite a long time, and I saw all this growth that was happening there and saying, wow, are we talking to JBLM at all? And we weren't. And so we set up a meeting and started talking to Lakewood and said, hey, are you guys talking to? And they weren't. And so we actually pulled some money together between Lacey and and Lakewood to hire someone who was in the Lakewood office at the time to start doing a little bit of research for us. And he has managed to go get this OEA grant. And now the OEA grant, along with some other recommendations that I was receiving from the National League of Cities Military Communities Peer Networking Group that showed a a compact between a military installation and a city in like North Carolina. Like, all this stuff came together, and that's how SSMCP was created. So Lacey has, if it wasn't for Lacey, I honestly believe, you know, we might not be here today. SSMC might not be here. Because we're literally one of the founding member along with Lakewood that then it turned into this, you know, the OEA grant that gave us more information, that gave us more information than we, you know, that's how we this this came to be. So of course, I'm going to be very supportive of this since we were in from the ground level. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to have the authorized city manager to sign this agreement, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And next we have is the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And next we have is the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program Funding, and we'll kick it right back over to Shannon again.
Well, good evening. Good evening for the third and final time. Here tonight, want to go over recommendations for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant. Just really quickly, again, as background, the city council has reviewed the process back, starting in January, reviewed applications starting back on April 13th, 2023, and then also invited affordable housing presenters to the work session on April 27th of, of this year. Just as kind of a reminder for funding, the city has around a million dollars of funding that is available to allocate to community development block grant applicants. This includes a maximum of around $181,000 for funding public services, which can only be 15% of the total of any year of block grant funding, which would leave a minimum of around $874, or $73,000 for capital projects. And this includes some funding that was left over from administrative costs for 2021. So, in total, the City of Lacey received 12 applications. That includes six social service applications and six capital project applications. As you can see from table two, and as we previously discussed in detail, we received more funding applications than funding is available, and so certainly had to take that into account as we were looking at what applications to move forward with in this process. So, the recommendations tonight are, as previously discussed, to fund the following public service programs. That would be funding Lacey Club scholarships for youth experiencing homelessness through the Boys and Girls Clubs of Thurston County, the Community Kitchen through Catholic Community Services, Monarchs Children's Justice and Advocacy Center through the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, and Thurston Counties, and the Home Share Program through Senior Services for the South Sound. This would total just under $143,000, so the city is recommending that the remaining $38,558 be used for projects, capital projects for affordable housing. The recommendations for capital projects for affordable housing would be to select one of the following options provided, or to create an alternative option. Just really quickly to go over each of the options. So, option A would provide 100% of the funding request for Foundation for the Challenged, for Housing for Extremely Low-Income Individuals with Intellectual and Development Disabilities. It would provide full funding for Rebuilding Together Thurston County, as well as South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. And then the remaining of the funding would be split equally between the Low-Income Housing Institute, also known as LEHI, and Homes First. And for Low-Income Housing Institute, the funding would be to preserve affordable housing here in Lacey, and for Homes First, it would be to acquire affordable housing here in Lacey. The second option, very similar, would be to fully fund the same groups that I just mentioned. So, the Foundation for the Challenged, Rebuilding Together Thurston County, South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, and then to provide $300,000 to the Low-Income Housing Institute, and the remainder of the funds, $376,843 to Homes First for acquisition of affordable housing. The third option would be to fully fund Rebuilding Together Thurston County, South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, not fund Foundation for the Challenged, and then split the remaining of the funds with Homes First and Low-Income Housing Institute for preserving or acquiring more affordable housing here in the City of Lacey. We do recommend selecting one of these options. Would be happy to talk more or answer any questions that the council might have about any of these options.
Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt option A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
So, if we were to select option A, could we then also, would it require a separate motion to allocate the $38,000 that's left over from the other funding stream? Because that's not included in these options here.
I thought, I misunderstood that. I thought it was included.
It is included, so these are updated from the previous time that we reviewed this, and so that has certainly been included now within these options. So, these are slightly revised options than what you had previously seen earlier in April, to take into account.
Looking at the old, the old sheet.
Okay. I withdraw my question.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Cox?
I'm happy to support option A.
Okay. Then, there's been a motion and second to adopt option A. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Got it? Yep, I heard her say aye. Okay.
That concludes the city manager's report tonight.
Thank you. Now, we're on to standing general committees. The Utilities Committee is up first.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this report is from May 1st. We met, had a, I'm sorry, had a presentation, I believe, with Peter Brooks, approved the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading this wrong. Doug Christensen gave us a presentation on amendments to illicit discharges and wellhead protection in critical area recharge areas. So, the long and short of it is to modify Chapter 14.29 and Chapter 14.36 as it relates to illicit discharges, wellhead protection, and critical area recharge areas according to new, new rules through the Western Washington Municipal Water, I'm sorry, Washington State Department of Ecology. Basically, I think what we're trying to do is mitigate the amount of illicit discharges that come out of, you know, washing cars or what have you, goes into our storm drains and affects our water source and water, water quality. So, that was the essence of the meeting.
Thank you. Next up is the Transportation Committee.
Yeah, transportation met on May 2nd, and we received our transportation maintenance annual report. Just basically a report of, you know, how many employees we have, how the operations go, the transportation, senior technician jobs duties, different departments, different responsibilities, and just kind of showing the balance, or should I say the, the budget for each. The amount of street sweepers we have, the stormwater maintenance crews, the facilities inspections, all the repair work that gets done, from roads to electrical departments, to the personnel hours and the daily duty. So, pretty comprehensive report that we receive annually. This time, it was a little more condensed than, than previous years. I think we were doing it biannually before. Here we are doing it annually. And that is my report.
Okay, then we'll go on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first. The Mayor's Forum did meet last Friday, and we met in Tenino. Tenino hosted. And it gave us an opportunity to see all the work they've done out at the Quarry House there, and the Quarry Pool, and that whole area. And it's, for someone who remembers swimming in the old, you know, Quarry Pool when I was a kid, and seeing where it was then and how far they've come, it's, it was really great to see that whole area being, really had been updated. And so, we got a chance to talk a little bit about that and the different funding sources that they, Tenino's used to, to do all that work there, that, you know, it's been a great spot for a very, very long time for the community. And it was, it just, it was great to be out there and see all the work that's not only done on, on the pool area and the landscape and the park, but also, you know, on the old Quarry House that's been remodeled and been brought up to date. So, that, that was nice. Then the Transportation Policy Board met last Wednesday, May 10th. There was an announcement that it was Bicycle Community Challenge Month, and as we know, we've signed a proclamation here, and so I hope everyone's out riding their bikes this month, getting some exercise. The weather definitely has cooperated. But there was really just two major agenda items that we, we were going over at this meeting. The first one was the new carbon reduction program funding. So, the Thurston Regional Planning Council is going to be receiving new funds specifically going to TRPC, about $500,000 annually between 2022, so last year, up through 2026. And so, this funding's coming in. Of course, when you have new funding, you have to set up new criteria to access that funding for all the communities, so on, so forth. So, you know, this, the, the purpose of this program is, you know, of course, intended to reduce CO2 emissions, and so a lot of the eligible projects will be stuff like bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and it's something that I've talked about at TPB for a while. We have a great network of trails, but we really have no funding in place to maintain and keep those trails safe. And, and, you know, a lot of the trails that have been paved while, a long time ago, now have tree roots growing through them and stuff. So, we're hoping that we can have a coordinated effort to, to do that, and here's some funding to do it. Of course, there's other things like energy-efficient street lighting and, you know, public transportation projects and intelligent transportation systems, and so on, so forth. So, the Transportation Policy Board will actually be making a recommendation to the full board next, on June 14th, to help come up with some of that criteria, so we can start getting some of the funding out in our communities. And then, the, the second big update was the Martin Way Corridor Study. And this was something that I've been, really been waiting on for a long time. This is a, a joint planning effort between TRPC, the Thurston County Air Sea Transit, and the cities of Olympia and Lacey. And this was kind of like deja vu all over for me, because when I, when I first was elected to this council, you know, over 13 years ago, I was put on the Urban Corridor Task Force Committee. And the Urban Corridor Task Force was set up to look at the same corridor, yeah. Not only the Martin Way Corridor, but the Martin Way Corridor, Pacific Avenue, all the way down, you know, downtown Olympia, then out, out to Tumwater. And I spent a lot of time and effort on that court, you know, on that task force to come up with a whole set of recommendations. And here we are, you know, over a decade later, and we have another study. And this is looking specifically at the Martin Way Corridor, not the rest of the, the full corridor. But it sort of reminds you that, you know, you do a study, it's only as, as successful as the action items within the study, and if someone is willing, you know, if there's agreement between jurisdictions to do something about it. And so, I know, we had a brief overview of this Martin Way Corridor Study at Transportation Policy Board. I've looked into it a little bit more to access the details, and there's some really important stuff in that. I know I keep bringing this up about the Martin Way Corridor. You know, a lot of people think that the majority of that Martin Way Corridor is in the City of Lacey. Well, it, it's not. It's actually in our urban growth area. Very little of the Martin Way Corridor is, is in the City of Lacey. You have to get all the way out to Galaxy Drive, and then look at how things change, and you know you're in Lacey, right? Prior to that, you, it doesn't look like Lacey because that's, that's in our urban growth area. And so, there, there is some recommendations within this study that I really think this council needs to be updated on, and I, I hope, you know, TRPC can come and, and give us an update, because there's some specific action items that I think are really important. And one of them is, is permitting, you know. There's a big reason why we haven't seen the redevelopment of that Martin Way Corridor, and it's a permitting issue. And so, there's a recommendation to consolidate that, and I think we should do that. But the other thing is, and I think it's a lesson learned from the Urban Corridor Task Force, they, they came up with a bunch of good recommendations, and there's some good work that came out that, that was really kind of, started looking more at nodes along the corridor. And one of the nodes along that corridor was what now is Lacey Midtown. And so, some really good work did come out of that. The other one was a focus on getting more housing to downtown Olympia. Well, there's a success story there, too. And then, out in Tumwater, they've seen some success along their boulevard as well. So, but, you know, unless you, there's sustained focus on something this big, when you're talking a corridor this big and this complicated, it's really hard to see progress happen year over year if you're, if you don't have, like, a subcommittee or something that's meeting and has the political will to, to do something about it. And, and when you have a plan or a study and you have no funding to implement it, then that's just, you know, in my mind, you know, a, almost a waste of money. And so, I did make a recommendation that, you know, we update our council on what's in this, in this study. And then, that, even though I'm not a big fan of, you know, subcommittees, but I really think that there needs to be an ongoing subcommittee, if there's the political will, to make sure that we are setting aside funding and making this a priority for our region. And that was my recommendation at Transportation Policy Board. I'm hoping we can set up a time there to give, come and give a more in-depth presentation to this council on, on, on the recommendations, and then hopefully we can go from there, and we can have a, sort of some sustained progress when it, when it comes to this corridor. So, that is my report. Deputy Mayor?
One quick report for the EDC. Most of the action surrounds the, the agricultural park in Tumwater and its, its construction and its building, and, and the, the, the building should go up in the next 60 days. We have until June 30th. There is a, a small shortfall in funding that can be, that gap is going to be filled most likely by the City of Tenino, as they will be the owner of, of the agricultural park building. With, with that being the, you know, that's been the focus of a lot of our, of our time and effort and attention in most of the meetings. But we did have an event on Tuesday night. It was a fundraising event. And in that event, you know, we, we were able to raise $35,000 for the EDC. And I was, one of the things I was surprised about in raising the $35,000, that the, the fees for raising $35,000 in this case were only $266. So, they got some kind of special deal with Square. I thought that was awesome. The Emeritus Board is still in the works, and, and hopefully, that, that board will, will help funnel, you know, more dollars into the EDC, because that will just be a, a board of previous board members. You guys know how that works. And so, the EDC is really, you know, they, they, we met with them, and, and the thing I got out of that meeting that we were all in, me, you, Rick, was, you know, some, some more grassroots efforts are needed to, to let the community know what exactly the EDC does and what a benefit it is for them to be a part of it, or at least reach out to them to scale up their business, start their business. Because the, the amount of work that they do to make sure that we get grant funding in this community for businesses to start, businesses to maintain, businesses to grow, they, they spend a lot of time, effort, and energy, but it, it seems as if the community at large doesn't access them as much as I would like to see, as much as I think they need to in order to continue, you know, scaling businesses and maybe even opening second locations and those types of things. So, we also did get a financial report for the EDC. The, the incoming was about 1.3 million with a net profit of $133,000, and the equity position nearly at $1 million, and that's just for the EDC side. That does not include the CBNI, which had a net ordinary income of $212,000 and equity position of a little over $1 million. So, you know, Michael Cade and his staff do really well for themselves in making sure that the dollars flow in and that we get to see a really positive net return for all the work that, that they do. The, the other thing about it is, is you can look all over the state. You're not going to find an EDC that is standing up agricultural parks on their own or with, you know, their, their partnering jurisdiction. So, once this agricultural park goes live, and again, the, the main focus of the agricultural park is to bring more food processing, manufacturing, and packaging to this area. We generate a lot of, of- processing, manufacturing, and packaging to this area. We generate a lot of produce and food in the state of Washington, but it's all manufactured, processed, and packaged in other states. And so we ship it out, let them do the work, and then it goes to the end user or the retail customer. And so the idea here is to keep some of those dollars here in this community, which I am a huge fan of. And of course, I'm always pushing my agenda at the EDC, which is to bring more indoor entertainment to Lacey, because that is an area that we are not, we're sending those disposable dollars to all of these other communities. The, I don't know if you guys know, but the disposable income in this community is absolutely ridiculous. It is a beautiful thing, but they, they, they leave this community to spend those dollars in other communities, because they have indoor entertainment for them to, to, to take part in. We have a lot of great, we, I don't know of another city that has a park structure like we do. We have the best parks in like three counties at least. But in December and January, those parks are pretty empty. And those, the residents still have, you know, dollars to spend and are looking for something to do. And I, I don't think we've provided that as a city, as a county, at all. So I keep pushing that, and I'll continue pushing that until I stand something up that, that the people here can spend their dollars on, and I will jump off the soapbox. And that is my report.
Thanks. That, we did have a really good meeting with Michael Cade and our city manager and to talk about, you know, the future of how we're connecting the dots from our community college, you know, to our makerspace, which is just an unbelievable opportunity for entrepreneurialism, you know, and keep, and keep the cycle going. So it was a, it was a really good meeting. And I look forward to continuing to work with the EDC. They do great work. And the reason why we had to do the fundraiser is because, of course, when COVID happened, all the private fundraising, you know, for the EDC just stopped. You know, it went to like zero. I think he like, got like $30 or something like that. And so, of course, like everything else, they need matching dollars and stuff to do a lot of what they're doing. So that's why we, they had the fundraiser. Okay. Councilmember Cox.
Great. My first report is at the May 10th meeting of the LOT Clean Water Alliance. We held a public hearing on the potential sale of a LOT-owned property on Rixie Road in the Tumwater area. This property is no longer needed for its intended use, so the board agreed to sell it to State Fish and Wildlife for a fish hatchery project. We also agreed to purchase from the Port of Olympia, a piece of land on Washington Street. This is right across from existing port property. And the port will actually lease back the land for, and use it for parking and storage until the port, until LOT needs it for future expansion. We also heard a presentation on the various pilot projects the port staff has been working on. And these projects allow the staff to test treatment methods and equipment with a minimal investment before committing to a major process or expenditure. So it's just a smart way of doing business. And on these property sale and purchases, it's almost a wash on the money received and the money spent. So that worked out well. I have two meetings of the Regional Housing Council to report on. The most recent one was on May 10th. We heard recommendations for grant funding from the Affordable Housing and Homeless Services Advisory Committees. We were able to do part of that work, including an award of $500,000 in federal Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, funds to South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. And this will go to support its eight-unit Longmire Project in Elm. The other two requests that were submitted for that funding weren't actually eligible for that funding source. So we agreed to the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation to roll over the remaining funds to a second funding cycle this summer, much like we just did with the community development block grant money. We also awarded $50,000 to Interface Works to facilitate the Lived Experience Advisory Committee. Because the state hadn't settled out, state budget hadn't quite settled out, we agreed to delay the basic needs funding decisions until next week's meeting. The April 26th meeting, we heard about a permanent supportive housing project on Franz Anderson Road, which will include 35 studio and 35 one-bedroom apartments. And these are for extremely low-income individuals with incomes at 30% of the area of median income or less, and will also include wraparound mental and physical health services. Priority will be given to the individuals living in rice away encampments. And our staff took part in evaluating proposals to build the housing. Lehi, it's the Low Income Housing Institute of Seattle, will take over once the developer is selected. Housing staff from City of Olympia is briefing local jurisdictions, and I've requested a presentation for our council on that. I mentioned the Lived Experience Steering Committee. This group was formed by Thurston County Health and Social Services to provide perspective and input on best practices for working with unhoused community members. Each of these steering committee members has experienced some form of homelessness. A few of them shared their life stories, and it was, it was really quite inspiring to see how engaged they are and how much they want to learn and contribute to the community. We had the new chair and vice chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee attending the meeting. They are non-voting members, but they're there to provide community voices and share their perspectives. And once the Homeless Services Advisory Committee elects its leaders, they too will begin attending as non-voting members. And both committees are involved in, right now, deeply immersed in learning how to do this, how to evaluate and score applications for state and federal housing and essential services grants. But they're doing it kind of like building an airplane while you're flying it, because we're right in the thick of the season for doing that, with deadlines coming up later this month and in June. And starting in June, the Housing Council was going to drop back to monthly meetings. We had been meeting twice a month. So we'll resume monthly meetings at four o'clock on the fourth Wednesday of the month. And this is, I also attended an intercity transit meeting on May 3rd. Councilmember Vasquez, I think I sent you my notes from that. Do you want to give that report, or would you like me to give it? No?
You go ahead. I did not pull those notes up.
Okay. All right. Well, it was very quickly. It was a fairly light agenda. We received an update on intercity transit's cybersecurity program. They worked with Homeland Security to test the strengths and weaknesses of the existing system, and also worked with a national insurance organization to assess risks. So there's obviously an ongoing effort to protect sensitive information and data assets. They're beginning the search, and I believe Councilmember Vasquez is part of this, for a new general manager to succeed, Anne Freeman Manzanera, who retired in late March. And then we had a quick report on the Earth Day Market Ride, which attracted 135 riders to the ride, starting around the farmer's market, and kicked off the annual, May Annual Bicycle Commute Challenge. That's my many reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein.
Two reports tonight. TCOM 911 met on May 3rd. Just a couple of things from that meeting. We recognized the Employee of the Year for 2022, actually, at that meeting, Kristy Thrift. She was nominated for her exceptional work in handling a very difficult situation on 11/15, involving an officer-involved shooting with multiple jurisdictions involved. So very serious situation, very tense. The employees that take the 911 calls and handle those calls and the dispatch are, you know, they are first responders. They do some very difficult work and really proud of the work that they're doing. So I just wanted to mention that. Also received an update on the radio project, which you've been hearing me talk about now for a couple of years. It's a long project. All of the back-ordered equipment is finally shipping. So we're getting past some of the, some of those issues that we've had with logistics. The biggest delay now is permitting on one of the tower sites, actually, in Thurston County. It's a site that's actually at one of the fire stations. I think it's Station 82, if I remember correctly. But it just, it's, it's been a challenge to get through the process of permitting with the county.
Shocking.
As, as we've heard some other things about in this meeting. And then last, we've had 10 new hires this year, resulting in having only six vacancies now, as compared to the 15 that we started the year at. Anticipation is that we will have every position filled by the end of this year. So we should be fully staffed at TCOM, which will be a huge relief. We've been having to do considerable amounts of mandatory overtime, just to be able to man the phones. So. The report I have is on EMS Medic 1. They met on the 17th yesterday. Currently have 14 people in our EMS training class. So that's good news. We should be having several new EMS trained people coming out fairly soon. We received, so the ALS Program Manager position opened up as Ben Miller Todd was promoted to the Executive Director. And we've been working to fill that spot. We finally, we wound up getting 12 applications in. They interviewed all 12 of them on Zoom interviews. Four of them were brought in for second interviews in person. And they are at the point now where they have made a decision and are actually going to make an offer here in the next couple of days. So we should have that position filled, hopefully, in the next few days. And very close to a contract being completed between Providence and Olympic Ambulance for the entryway staffing. You've all heard me talk about that. And Ben talked about it at our last committee meeting, or our last work session, I should say. That is going to help. It helps relieve and put our ambulances back out on the road and our paramedics back out on the road to handle calls much faster. In our test phase, which was a seven-week test phase, it saved, it got us 140 hours of additional time on the road. So I mean, it's a significant difference. EMS Medic 1's been paying for it. So the taxpayers have been paying for this service. That's now changing with this contract. So Providence will actually be paying to man that doorway, rather than the taxpayer paying it. So that's a really good thing. And other than that, the only thing was, we did get a financial report for the first quarter, and everything is on pace. So expenditures and revenue are right where we would have expected them to be at this point. So that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports. One with Joint Animal Services. We met May 1st. Received an update in our capital facilities plan from Ryan Andrews. It's no surprise that the current animal shelter does not meet the standard. It is undersized and poorly functions for the needs of an animal shelter. The facility was never purpose-built when it was acquired and would not meet the standards of care, even if the building and infrastructure were in more nominal condition. There are other issues to consider. There are approximately two acres of usable land for the current location, which minimizes a potential footprint for a new building. And since in the city limits, the shelter cannot take on livestock animals for care. If we build a new purpose-built shelter on the existing property, it will likely disrupt the day-to-day operations, will not be the most ideal location for needs and capacity. And I suggested to the board that we consider the pros and cons of looking for a new location more rural, like in South County, as we could potentially find a larger lot to work with, probably be more budgetable than trying to incorporate that in the current location. But also, you know, the question would be, which jurisdiction would partner and help support the shelter, since it would be in South County? It wouldn't be very practical for Lacey to do it. So there's quite a bit to think about, contemplating the need for a new facility. But in the director's report, we do have some good news. The sewer repair issue is complete, and so far, so good. I haven't heard anything elsewise, but that was May 1st when I heard that news. There has not been any more sewer backup issues since the repairs, and let's hope it stays that way. And most of us have heard about the recent cat hoarding case with a resident of Thurston County. The shelter had to step up and rescue over 130 cats, which were living in one residence, after the tenant cat owner was evicted. And I would hate to have been that landlord. We are now technically over our capacity of animals in the shelter after responding to this issue. And my understanding is they had to make several visits, as they didn't know if they got them all. That would have been a lot of fun. So for public listening and fellow council members, if you have room in your household, the shelter is always looking for foster homes and adoption of these wonderful cats. And I have one, so I'm safe. So that's that report. And then the Visitor Convention Bureau, we met last Tuesday. We're getting great news and feedback on local tourism, which is awesome. In 2022, Thurston County had a record of visitor spending of approximately 518.8 million in Thurston County. That's pretty phenomenal. That's the most we've ever done. Most of these dollars spent pertain to food and beverage and retail. We also talked about our DMO plan. I am actually on the Destination Management Task Force and had a great deal of time that had been invested in community listening sessions across the county, which the mayor was part of one of them. We are compiling feedback on how to draw more, you know, promote local tourism, as well as encouraging more of a community buy-in and commitment to that, that will draw more tourism to our community. In the scorecard, March has been a promising month. Occupancy and revenue rates are up from the last report. We also have a 46% increase in unique web visits from our site as opposed to last year, and a 14% increase in e-newsletters from last year. So everything seems to be on an upward trend in the right direction for local tourism. That's my report.
Great. Just two cents about Jazzcom. It has always been weird that that's our building, right?
Washington Natural Gas, correct?
Yeah, yeah, Washington Natural Gas. And here's a classic example of a really decent-sized property right on the corridor, right across from intercity. I mean, it's a really good property, and we're using it for animal services. Now, it is somewhat centrally located, you know, between Lacey, Olympia, you know, the northern part of Thurston County. But I don't think that's the best use of that property.
No, and with the local ordinance, they, you know, again, you can't have livestock in there. So they can't, they can't do anything helpful in that regard.
Well, hopefully, some source study is done, and you can...
Is it possible to change the local ordinance or create an exception specifically for Jazzcom in the code?
We're not in Olympia.
It's Olympia.
Oh, it's an, yeah, yeah.
It's Olympia.
Well, it might be possible, but it's not for us.
Is it something more rural? I think that makes more sense, because you can find more property if it's rural and for less money. It just, it makes more economic sense to have, have a shelter in the rural area of Thurston County, South County.
Or at least, you know, Elmh Highway someplace that is still centrally located, but not in the northern part, but more in the...
Well, I even suggested to consider closer to Rochester or Maytown or Little Rock.
But, you know, you don't have to...
But you still have a...
Serve that way.
The main corridor, the main corridor is not right.
Yeah. Currently, we're going to be looking at all options as the capital facilities plan work is being developed. We look at those costs. The next step will be to sit down with all of our jurisdictional partners and start talking about the cost benefit of the various options of, you know, trying to rebuild in place. Because not only if it's, you know, talking about location, it's also challenging, because you're trying to expand and redevelop while continuing operations there, too. So those create their own challenges. Then looking at other type of, you know, publicly owned... Then looking at other type of, you know, publicly owned properties by one of the jurisdictions to see if there could be some opportunities for taking advantage of that. There's a lot of pieces that we don't have a lot of information on yet, but that would be the next step in the conversation.
My understanding is that part of that lot, you know, there's, there's delineated soils, there's wetlands close by. So that creates a problem, too, as far as, you know, the usable footprint and setbacks. And then you have to consider what to do with the original building. I mean, there's a lot there that's just a mess. And it's just awful. It's awful that we have the shelter there. You know, and it's been a problem for a long time. And still, we don't see any forward progress to making that difference, making a change.
Well, I remember when it was, it used to be downtown Olympia, then they moved, moved it over there. Anyway, okay. Councilmember Vasquez.
Got a couple of quick reports. We had the ORCA board meeting earlier this month. And part of that meeting was spent reviewing the budget draft for the next year. Just in case anyone's curious, ORCA is a mighty five-county organization that employs 17 people total. So they're, they cover a lot of ground with very few staff. They have a 12% increase both in their anticipated revenues and in their anticipated spending, so it levels out. And that includes compensation increases that were approved by the board previously for the staff and some adjustments to their salary structure. And that was, we got a lot of great help from a consultant that provided salary structure guidance and market rate study information for us. We also had a tutorial on ozone, which measuring ozone is pretty complicated, actually. And I learned a lot from Odell, who is employed by ORCA. She's very smart. For the Thurston Regional Planning Council, we had the executive director evaluation process happening over the course of the last month. And Mark Daly did very well. He got high marks from every member of TRPC for the work that he continues to do for that organization. They're also taking a look at their staffing model because one of their long-serving employees at TRPC, Karen Parkhurst, many of you have worked with her over the years. She's retiring and good luck to her. But they're adjusting how her position is designed. So they're creating a planning manager that will focus more on supporting staff and running special projects instead of doing all things all the time, which is what Karen has been doing. We also got an update on the Unified Planning Work Program, which we have to have in order to proceed with some of the work that TRPC does. And we're expecting an update on the Martin Way Corridor Study or a discussion of the Martin Way Corridor Study that the mayor mentioned on June 2nd. I did miss the board meeting earlier this month for InterCity Transit. Thank you, Councilmember Cox, for going to that for me. But we had another one yesterday. And hot topics there are the Zero Emission Retreat that is going to happen on July 12th, all-day retreat potentially to talk about the zero emission science and what's going on in that space. And that date magically worked for everybody on InterCity Transit's board. And we also took action to rescind the vaccine mandate for the staff of InterCity Transit in light of recent changes to vaccine policy at the state and federal levels and the sunsetting of the federal public health emergency. And I think that's pretty much it. There was a Board of Health meeting I was not able to attend. Councilmember Miller attended, but I believe they gave the same presentation about emergency management and our needs in the community that we received last Thursday.
Okay. Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. I hope everyone's been enjoying this spectacular weather we've been having. Boy, it just changes everything when the weather's nice in the Pacific Northwest. It's like we're in a new world or something like that. So with that, you keep it classy, Lacey. I'll call this meeting adjourned.